Good evening. Join me, if you will, by bowing your head for a moment of silent prayer. Amen. If you would join me in the prayers of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, January 13th, 2011. Happy New Year. We have a number of visitors with us tonight, and I understand that some are from Leadership Rutherford, and we're certainly pleased that you're here. And many of us have participated in Leadership Rutherford, or spoken, or been a part of that program, and it's an excellent program devised by our Chamber of Commerce, and they do an excellent job. So we welcome you, and we're glad you're here. Enjoy your stay, and you're free to stay as long as you wish, or free to go if you have other commitments later. I know you're excited about being here. And certainly, you got to travel on the roads of our fair city to get here tonight, and I've heard a number of comments from our residents and business owners that our roads got cleared off very well, and our great appreciation and thanks to our street department and those members of our city staff that worked diligently to provide us a safe and manageable thoroughfares during the recent snow event. So I want to mention that and say thank you for that. Also, council members, you have a requirement each January to file a disclosure form in any interest that you have for the city of Murfreesboro, and that's due now, and also online with the state of Tennessee. There is a disclosure form due, so I wanted to make sure that you've all had an opportunity and are aware of that requirement, and if you'll get those filed and turned in, those are available through the city recorder and also online with the state of Tennessee. Also, the city of Murfreesboro and our Murfreesboro Police Department are now offering the NIXLE, that's N-I-X-L-E, Community Information Service, which allows the E-911 Communications Center to send emergency messages directly to residents who sign up. The messages can either be received by cellphone, email, text message, or at the www.nixle.com website. Messages will be used only for urgent emergency situations, which could include tornadoes, other situations where life-saving messages are urgently needed. And in order to register for this free service, you could go to www.nixle, and that's n-i-x-l-e dot com, and complete the online registration form, and standard cellphone charges will apply for that. But that gives everyone who carries a cellphone an instant warning for emergency situations and other life-saving messages that would be available through the city. I appreciate our city staff making that available. Thank you. Also, the Murfreesboro City Schools will observe its 120th anniversary with a celebration January the 20th, that's next Thursday, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. at John Pittard Elementary School on Dejarnet Lane. With more than seven teachers from our city system named to the Tennessee Teacher Hall of Fame, and one named the National Teacher Hall of Fame, the system has much to celebrate, and among some of its accomplishments are three teachers named to the state of Tennessee Teacher of the Year, the home of Tennessee's first National Board Certified Teacher, the highest achievement for a teacher, pioneered preschool education nationally with Ruth Bowden Classroom on Wheels, which initiated in 1969. And it's also the home, our city schools, the one of the first after-school programs in the nation that became recognized as a premier example of extended school programs in the country. So we're real proud of our city schools. Join us, 4:30 to 6:30 at John Pittard Elementary, next Thursday night, January the 20th. Anything else from the council members before we get started? All right, the first item on your agenda is the consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, are there any questions? If not, is there a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is presented?
Some move, second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
You also have before you the minutes of the regular meetings held on October the 28th, November the 4th, November 18th, December 2nd, and December 9th. Are there any questions or additions or deletions to those minutes as they are presented?
Mayor, here, now I move. We approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Like to consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 7 Buildings, Section 7-12 in Chapter 11 Electricity, Section 11-13, dealing with swimming pool alarms.
Move for his passage on third and final reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll hear from Ms. Cory Wells with regards to One Book of Rutherford County and the Read to Succeed program. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cory Wells, and I'm here on behalf of Read to Succeed, which, as you all know, has been promoting literacy here in Rutherford County for over seven years now. We have multiple programs, including Reading in the Schools Day, Reading Rally, Unplug and Read, Read to Be, and our high school Express Yourself Arts Conference, just to name a few. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about this year's One Book Community Read program. Each year, we join our partners Lineball Library, MTSU, and Barnes &amp; Noble in asking adults in Rutherford County to all read the same book. This year's title is Major Pettigrew's Last Stand by Helen Simonson. It's a story that beneath a lot of interesting complications in the life of retired English major Ernest Pettigrew, some dry British wit, and some laugh-out-loud moments, also examines more serious issues about stereotypes and relationships across lines of culture, religion, and class. This book has been on the New York Times Bestseller List and made the top five list in fiction for both Amazon and Oprah this year, but I want you to know that we picked it before Oprah did. Critics have described the novel as thoroughly charming and refreshing in its optimism and its faith in the transformative possibilities of courtesy and kindness. Additional partners supporting this year's effort include the Learning Circle, First Baptist Church, and the Intercultural and Diversity Affairs Center at MTSU. So as usual, I have brought a copy because your constituents are reading this book, and we appreciate you all as leaders reading this book and setting an example for literacy mattering here in Rutherford County. And so I need an interested council member or mayor to say they would like to take this book and then pass it along.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor Bragg, but that council member Gilli here was also looking at it. I'll let you all decide. Thank you for your time.
I'll wash it off. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wells, and, oh, Mr. Gilli, you're so kind.
If you want me to take it first, I will.
No, no, I'll be glad to do that. I'll tell you where the good parts are. Do you want me to mark them in the...
No, I don't want you to make notes in the margins.
Make notes in the margins, okay. We'll take care of that. Thank you. Thanks very much. Appreciate you being here. All right, at this time, we'll conduct a public hearing and consider a certificate of compliance for Teas' I Patel Easy Corner Wine and Spirits at 350 North Thompson Lane. Is the applicant here? All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone's wishing to speak for or against this certificate of compliance, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Is there a motion? We accept the certificate.
Will it be approved?
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on December the 9th, 2010, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 53.4 acres east of Armstrong Valley Road from Planned Residential Development, PRD District, to single-family residential 15 RS-15 District. Kay Travis is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the December 26th issue of the local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Ailey.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. This public hearing is to consider rezoning approximately 53.4 acres, located along the western side of Armstrong Valley Road, and it's shaded blue on the map on the screen and the map in your packets. The property is currently zoned PRD, Planned Residential District, and the property owners are now requesting to rezone that to RS-15, Single Family Residential District. The properties to the south and to the west are in the uncorporated area of Rutherford County. The adjacent property along the eastern property lines of the subject area is zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and it's a mixed-use development called Indigo. It's not currently developed, or I don't know of any plans for the near future for the Indigo development to be, construction to begin. Just to the north is Veterans Parkway, and also is the Western Park PUD, which development has begun on portions of that Western Park plan development. The current PRD zone for this property is to permit 165 detached condominium units for sale to people who are at least the age 55 or above. It was marketed and designed to be in an active adult community. Now, this got approval a couple of years ago, and no development has taken place on the property, and it seems that this plan is no longer a good fit because there's nobody interested in moving forward with that project. So it's an apparent victim of the poor economic climate. So the request is actually what we call downzoning because it would be zoned to RS-15, which is our largest lot, largest minimum lot residential zone that we have in Murfreesboro. So with the current plan, they could have 165 condominiums, which is about three units per acre for a density of three units per acre. Under the RS-15, if you do approve that, they could get approximately 100 single-family lots, and that does not account for the wetlands, which do exist on site. And of course, there are some institutional uses that would be permitted by special use permit or by right. Mr. Larry Sims is a representative for the applicant, and I didn't notice that he was here this evening, so I don't know that there's anybody here to answer any questions other than myself and Mr. Adelot. So if you do have questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or for the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing before considering rezoning this property to RS-15.
All right, any questions of Ms. Ailey? Before I open the public hearing? Then if not, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this rezoning, please step to the microphone, give us their name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning? If there is no one here wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance rezoning an area east of Armstrong Valley Road to single-family residential 15 RS-15 District.
Some move. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant Transportation Director with regards to passenger waiting transit shelters for the Transfer Hub Federal Project. How about that? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, and the members of the council. Report you tonight is a recommendation that Wellspring Builders Incorporated be awarded a contract to construct and install a transit shelter at the Rover Transit Hub, located at the corner of Walnut and Burton Streets. The need for a transit shelter at the hub was a top priority of our ridership. You have on the screen before you how our transfer hub looks currently. The ridership, as you know, meets here every hour, half hour, and they meet out in the elements, and given this week's snow, it was really bad. The invitation to bid was announced on 11/24/2010. We received three legitimate bids, and before you is a prototype of what the transit shelter will look like. We received bids from Neestrick Contractors for $106,067, one from Garver Builders LLC for $99,843, and one from Wellspring Builders for $88,374. Federal and state funding for this project have been secured, and the local funding is included in our current city budget. The funding for this project is 80% federal, 10% state, and 10% local. I request that the council approve the awarding of this contract to Wellspring Builders Incorporated and authorize the mayor's subsequent execution.
Any questions for Ms. Patton regarding this bid and our acceptance?
Just to be clear, the city's portion of this is about $8,800.
Just, yes, about $8,800.
And the rest comes from state and federal monies?
Right.
Other questions? May I move? We approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Thank you. Mr. Washington, second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Patton. We look forward to that. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to readoption of Title VI policy. Ms. McKannon.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. You have with the agenda material the proposed restatement of the city's Title VI policy. This is a policy that you adopted in 2002, and we have made certain revisions to it, which we believe are appropriate, and ask you to approve them tonight as part of our every-three-year program report to the Department of Transportation that gives us the funding for such things as shelters. And we have added a section dealing with limited English proficiency because that is one of the requirements that is now applicable to us, and modified the time period in which someone who feels that there has been a problem has to make a complaint, and we would ask your approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. McKannon regarding this readoption of our Title VI policy as she has recommended? Great explanation. Is there a motion?
Move. We approve the recommendation of our city attorney.
Second.
Motion and second. Let's please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33 Waters and Sewers, Section 33-2 and 33-50, relative to connection fees for water and sewer taps.
Thank you, mayor. The city, we have a recommendation for the Water and Sewer Board to approve ordinance 11001 regarding our connection fees, system development charges we have on new construction. Presently, we have a fee system of $1,200 per detached single-family residence and $2,550 for a single-family detached residence for sewer. The recommendation, after three of our meetings, you have all the information from the different meetings, is that these fees be reduced back to the 2006 level, which would be approximately $1,000 reduction in the total fee amount. The reasoning behind that is to help stimulate economy, to try to develop that. This is only for single-family residential detached units, so it doesn't affect, for instance, recently, the NHK paid their fees, and they're based on single-family equivalents, but it would not affect that in the future if an industry or something that we make equivalence to would come in. So this is really for the single-family home. We've provided you with the information, background information, connection fees. These fees are reserve funds. They go into a working capital, and from that working capital, we fund projects we feel that are affordable, that we can do without borrowing money. We've done a lot of projects in the past with these funds that helped stimulate the building industry, and like, for instance, the overall Creek Sanitary Sewer, which opened up a large area for development in new customers, new revenue for us. Basically, this is a, the connection fee is a buy-in of that new customer, the capacity that they use up that we can replace. We've provided a lot of information for you. I'll be glad to answer any questions. We're, even with the reduction, we're still looking at approximately $800,000 in revenue that we would project, so, you know, it's, we still have a significant amount of revenue that would come in, but it depends on the amount of activity. If there's no construction, we won't receive any. If there is construction, then it will certainly increase our revenues in the reserve area. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Mr. Lyons, did you have something you wanted to add before we open up questions?
Yeah, and I think maybe what I wanted to do is just make a few brief comments just to kind of maybe zoom out just a little bit more and talk maybe a little bit bigger picture about some of the things that we have done to facilitate growth and development in the community. One thing we've always looked at are the city's fees and charges. Shannon Logan, one of our planners, did a very comprehensive survey last year that we've provided to you this week. She was able to update those numbers. We've placed that on the desk before you. But when we look at our water and sewer fees compared to what we see both in middle Tennessee and then according to the national surveys, what we find is that our fees are at or below those averages. So we know we've tried to be very cost competitive. That does facilitate growth, and that's based on the current levels. We're also actually at fee levels that are less than those recommended by Jackson Thornton, who we use to look at our system financially. So we know we've tried to hold the line that way, again, to try to facilitate growth. We also know that the connection fees over the course of the years has funded a significant number of projects. We funded over $40 million worth of capital projects, such as the overall sewer, which then facilitated additional growth. So I think the cities tried to be very proactive when it came to using these connection fees to fund capital projects. As you saw in Mr. Kirchner's packet, the monthly water and sewer bills that our customers pay, we put that in a bucket over here that pays for salaries, it pays for chemicals, electricities, and our day-to-day operating expenses. We've been able to take these connection fees and put them in a separate bucket, and out of that bucket, we're able to pay cash for capital projects. When the city winds the road, the Water and Sewer Department's able to take money out of those connection fees to replace and move the water lines. We've used it to develop sewer basins that has led to significant development. When we step back and look at it, we've opened up thousands of acres of development because we've been proactive in master-planning sewer so that it doesn't get done piecemeal. Again, we think that has led to good planning and helped the system develop in a comprehensive manner. But we also understand that times are tough right now. We've certainly seen the decrease in our, in the home-building community. They certainly bring a ton of jobs and investment to Murfreesboro. When they build a house, that means there's furniture that gets purchased. There is appliances that get purchased, and when those purchases get made, that generates the sales tax. This has been a very difficult issue. We've tried to be proactive in this downturn with things like the Smart Move campaign. You'll recall about a year ago, Destination Rutherford funded a marketing program to try to encourage Murfreesboro residents that is an excellent time to purchase a house. We used marketing money to try to, you know, stimulate the economy that way. We've been in discussions with the development community for over a year now, trying to figure out a way of how do we deal with this difficult economy. It is tough right now. They have had to cut back significantly in the number of people that they employ, and so I know they have brought this measure to you and this request to you as a means to try to stimulate the housing levels. It is a tough issue. The fact of the matter is, is there are many forces at work about why, you know, the economy is where it is. Some of those are certainly well out of our control. Credit markets have gotten a lot tighter. Unemployment is higher than it has been in the past, and locally, we're trying to figure out how do we navigate this very difficult environment. We've tried to take steps to try to make things easy to develop in Murfreesboro. It's been a real challenge, and we're still looking for, what can we do to try to put ourselves in a position to grow and prosper as a community? We'd rather be here than anywhere else. We know this community's been successful for many years because many people have contributed and invested in our community. When those investments occur, the community benefits, the city government benefits, and we grow as a city. So I know this has been an issue that's received a lot of discussion, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
All right, you have any questions for Mr. Lyons or Mr. Kirchner?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions, and just to be clear, this is a recommendation for a temporary roll, but it's not a permanent.
There is a time certain that it will expire and revert to the original fees.
And second, we talked a lot at the Water and Sewer Board level about that if you make your projections for revenue based upon certain fee that, as you said just a minute ago, if those connections are sold, then that revenue comes in. If it's not sold and continues to go down, obviously, the department doesn't bring that revenue in. Have you been able to figure out, and I'd asked you earlier in the week to do this, if this did stimulate additional permits being pulled at the lower rate, how many additional permits would need to be pulled over this period of time to where we at least break even with what your projections would have been at the higher rate?
Me, we looked at our July through December figures and calculated that if, to have the same amount of revenue would require another 152 taps at the lower rate. That's for sewer, and for water, it would only require about 17. Now, remember, most of our growth is in the CUD water service area, so most of this is going to be sewer-oriented in those areas. And those are numbers that are in your packet as far as the number of units that were sold, and using those numbers, the equivalence would be approximately that. I think I need to remind everyone, too, is that the improvements that we've made have been the trunk sewers, to make, if you will, the interstate for these sewers, what everybody connects to. The developer pays for all the infrastructure in the subdivision, so we're not providing sewer for the developer. He is providing his sewer and his water in that subdivision for each lot, which is required by the city code. So I want to make it real clear that this is not, we didn't expand the sewer system in a subdivision for somebody. We expanded the trunk that would allow people to develop subdivisions along it. And it's paid us back well, I believe.
And it's paid us back well, I believe, over time with the amount of additional customers. We wouldn't have the avenue if it hadn't been for getting trunk lines out, the overall creek line thing. So, you know, it stimulated a lot of, not just residential, but commercial and industrial growth.
But we wouldn't have those connection fees if the buildings weren't being built and had them constructed.
Correct. They, over time, if, we've been able to build up those funds, we have utilized those funds for projects that are more affordable, that we wouldn't want to really borrow money for. I think the largest project we probably funded probably would have been the bio-solids expansion we did at the wastewater plant not too long ago, about $4 million. That's a plant expansion. And the more recent one is the Lidle Creek Interceptor, is about three and a half million, that we're replacing an old line that leaks and putting in a new, the new infrastructure there. So those are probably the larger projects that we have funded from that. The rest of them all go from, you know, anywhere from $100,000 to maybe a million or so, and then up to those. But there have been a lot of projects we've been able to do with this reserve, and we have about, I'd say we have about $6 million available that we could use for various projects in the near future with, similar to that, really road projects and things like that that would come up.
So we have $6 million on hand. If it comes in, current level projection of permits at the reduced rate, that's another $800,000.
Yeah, that's in hand now, so I mean...
So there'd be another $800,000, and if we go up to another hundred, if it sparks more, that's just additional that goes into that account.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, before we get too deep in this, I'd like to take a moment, if I would, to do some disclosure. As everyone may or may not know, I am in the real estate business, but probably for my income, more people don't know that I'm in the real estate business, but I'll say that upfront, that I am a real estate agent, and after consulting with the city attorney, that we've come to the conclusion that while I do not have a conflict of interest under state law, under the city ethical standards policy, I do have a personal interest, and I want to disclose that at this time, that I am a real estate agent. I do not represent any builder, any new home sales. I do not pull permits. I primarily do commercial real estate, but I wanted to make that known on the front end upfront before we get into this discussion, so I could participate in that, if you will, Mayor, but...
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kirchner?
Mr. McGinnis, that cover it pretty well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. McFarland?
Mayor, after talking with legal staff, I, on the other hand, I do own my own construction company, and I am, do not have a direct conflict of interest, but I have a foreseeable direct conflict of interest. I do pull permits, so I will be abstaining from any discussion and any vote, to be fair, so anyone on the outside can see that I'm not being involved in something that could provide direct benefit to me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Anyone else? I buy water and sewer from the city of Murfreesboro. I'm going to disclose that.
Mayor, I received a call earlier this week asking about the type of law that I practice. I just want to make clear to the public, I do not do real estate closings. I couldn't do a title search if someone held a gun to my head. I practice in civil insurance litigation, and so I do nothing that has to do with real estate law or the pulling of permits.
All right. Thank you. So basically, we're saying that this capital, this reserve fund pays for new trunk projects and existing rehabilitation renovation projects?
Correct. Some things coming up in the near future is, we're replacing some 15-year-old pumps at the wastewater plant. We recently replaced a drum screen at the wastewater plant. So that's some of the plant things that we've done. Now, the water plant we recently expanded, that was borrowed money, and it is paid for through the rates, through our debt service, the principal and interest. So that, you know, was a very, a $40 million project, which we wouldn't have on hand, wouldn't want to keep that much money on hand. But this helps us give us replacement when an emergency would come up, or a planned replacement of things that need to be worked on, and it gives us an opportunity to do that without going to having to borrow every nickel and dime that we might need to do a project coming up. So in the past, the funds have allowed us to do those large trunk sewers. Those were the base connection fees. There's another set of our sanitary sewer district fees. This ordinance does not affect those. They stay in full effect, and that is to recoup the money that we spent to put those trunk lines in, back from those that are using it and benefit from that, so...
That would be special assessment districts?
Yes, yes. So none of that changes. This would only be what I call is our base connection fees that we have. That was the pocket of money that allowed us to do those projects without borrowing, and now that money's being brought back in through those assessments.
And water and sewer general revenues are based on volume?
Yes.
Sold.
Yes.
Correct, on whatever water's sold, and then you pay a sewer upcharge based on whatever the volume is.
Yes.
And those fees would not be?
No.
And then your reserve funds today, do they in fact meet a, some minimum requirement that the board has set for reserve funds to be on hand?
The board has set a minimum requirement of keeping one-year operating expense on hand, and that's $16 million, and we keep that in reserve. And the good example I give is New Orleans, when Contrita came in, the city was devastated. You know, the department lost revenue for a long period of time, and this would enable us to pay the salaries and pay the chemicals and things that would be needed to get us to continue to operate.
And even with the projects that you have underway and paying for them out of this reserve fund, you still will have that minimum amount of reserve funds held?
Yes. Now, that will be evaluated over time. You know, that is a recommendation that we made. It varies widely with different utilities and things, so it could go less than that, they could want to do more than that, but right now, that's where we're comfortable at, and certainly every budget year, we look at that. I know Mr. Lyons recently did a, you know, a plan for the city, and we will in kind adopt those that would be relative to us, and certainly take another look at the levels that we keep our reserves at.
So again, it doesn't have anything to do with revenues. It has something to do with reserves and money that you hold aside for projects, either rehabilitation, renovation, or replacement. It doesn't have anything to do with this volume-based charges that all of us pay that pay for water and sewer?
Correct.
Or those that just pay for sewer through the assessment?
The things that the normal rates pay for are the operating funds, that's the salaries, the overhead, the chemicals, the maintenance, and things like that. It provides for the debt service for the money that we have borrowed, and just the general operation of the system. It really doesn't go into the capital aspect of it, other than the debt service portion of it, which is about $12 million a year, the principal and interest.
I think I look at, if I look at the condensed financial information from 2009 and 2010, the reserves were $28 million at the end of 2009 and about $28 million at the end of June 2010. I believe those are the numbers that I have here from your audit financial statement. And you had operating expenses plus maintenance expenses plus depreciation, amortization, and non-operating. It showed 27,903. And then you had capital, you had net assets plus other assets, which it said capital contribution from developers, which included tap fees, less the tap fee expense, was a little over $8 million for the year ended June 2010.
There is a part of that, of the fee structure we have, that goes to the hardware that's put in the ground, and that's not a connection fee. That is, you know, the tap or the service line that's put in for water, that's paid for basically by the plumber or the builder when he puts that house in.
Any other questions or comments? Excuse me.
We mentioned that, you know, that is the audit, and we do have projects that, you know, that doesn't reflect the $3.5 million that we are funding on the Lidle Creek project, and so there's, projecting that out is where I've come up with the figures that I gave this evening.
Did you, based on current number of permits, in an 18-month period or a 12-month period, do you have the net revenue loss that you would expect if you had just exactly the same number of permits?
Well, we looked at it from our numbers from July of '09 to December of '10, seven months, and it's approximately $330,000. So, you know, probably double that, say 14 months, that'd be $600,000 if building continues. The way I have done the connection fee budgeting is that I look what was done the previous year and just said, we're going to be at the same level. That hasn't always happened in that, because it doesn't matter in the budget as far as the net of that, because whatever comes in goes out into reserve. It's not something that's used in, there is a small portion of connection fees for operation, but for the majority, it goes into the reserve.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33 Waters and Sewers, Section 33-2 and 33-50 relative to connection fees for water and sewer taps. The implementation date would be February 1st, or could we determine a date?
I'd have to look at the...
Goes into effect?
Immediately.
Immediately upon...
Immediately after the third reading.
Reading.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gilli?
Mayor, one suggestion, after talking to several members of the public that I might like to throw out there. We've looked at what's proposed as 18 months, is perhaps doing this for a 12-month period and evaluating it after a full year instead of a year and a half period of time, to see what kind of interest it's sparking in growth and that sort of thing. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but doing it for a year as opposed to a year and a half.
I can do that. Is that in the form of a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second it. All right. So would we need to amend the ordinance to 12 months, or would we pass it on first reading as 12 months?
You could amend it before, so it would be adopted as amended. If you make the motion, it would change the references to September 1st to March 1st, if my math is right.
I think you're correct.
Would you make that motion then for an amendment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
That's me.
All right. We have a motion in second to amend it to 12-month period.
You can't miss what you don't have. You know, and you did an excellent job explaining. I hope the public heard everything that you said about revenue and how it's distributed and how it's not going to impact the rate structure.
Correct. We're changing it before passing.
I can do that.
Ms. Wright?
This would be passing it before we, we're not amending it, we're passing it with that change made before we pass it the first reading.
All right. So we don't need an amendment. We're just having an ordinance as 12 months. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, the motion that Mr. Gilli is now making, based on this consensus, is to adopt the proposed ordinance with the change from September 1st, 2012, to March 1, 2012, throughout the document. And if that's his motion in second, then you would be voting on that motion.
All right. Everybody understand that then? All right. You have a motion in second on first reading. Everyone understands the motion. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
I'm staying.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution adopting the 2010 revision of the Rutherford County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Who would like to speak to that? Ms. McGinnis?
In the absence of others, I assume so. What you have in front of you, gentlemen, and Ms. Gales-Harris, is a recommendation that we join with the other communities in Rutherford County to submit to FEMA the update of our Rutherford County Hazard Mitigation Plan. That is a requirement for full and final approval and adoption by FEMA and TEMA, and your planning and engineering, police, and fire have looked at this document and believe it is appropriate. The language of the resolution is somewhat boilerplate, but it is recommended to you by your staff.
All right. Is there a motion we adopt?
Second.
All right. You have a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution regarding energy-efficient schools initiative. Welcome.
I'm Gary Anderson, Finance Management Services Director for Murfreesboro City Schools. Before you is a loan request for a million dollars from the state of Tennessee. In our never-ending search for more energy efficiency, means we came across the opportunity to have a interest-free, $1 million loan for 10 years. One of the criteria of getting these loans from the state is that the loan be able to pay for itself in energy efficiency through savings, and the state has approved this, and so the loan has to be with the city government and not with the school system, and that's why it's before you tonight. The million dollars will go for energy efficiency things in lighting at our older schools, and with some new HVAC units. We have some units in our schools that are now 35 years old that we are trying to replace. With this loan, we will have already received the savings before we have to pay the loan off, so that is, we feel, an excellent opportunity for the school system to move forward in our renovations of some of our older schools. One other thing is that the loan covers a million, and our project is about $1,035,000, and thanks to Mr. Washington, he asked us to contact TVA, and they have indicated that we can receive another $35,000 to $40,000 from TVA in additional monies. So it's an excellent opportunity, we feel.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Anderson regarding this resolution? Is there a motion?
Let me approve the resolution.
Second.
All right. Motion to adopt in a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I liked your time.
Mayor Bragg, there's no telling how many thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars that will be saved by those types of initiatives, you know? Robert Hope, he listed it.
The city hall project, I believe, they have found the street now.
Does he need to disclose the conflict?
No. I don't work with TVA.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, for your help and support. Ms. Gilbert's here. Thank you. I know, we appreciate all the work that you do in working with our children and taking care of our buildings and making sure they're energy efficient. Thank you. Are there any beer permit applications?
Not tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. You have before you a list of the statements to be considered for payment. I believe you have a revised list. Yes, you do. A revised list of the bills to be paid. Is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. As to board and commission appointments, I make these recommendations to you. As to board and commission appointments, I make these recommendations to you. I appoint Newton Malloy to the Evergreen Cemetery Board, replacing W.H. Davidson here. Appoint Myers Parsons, replacing J.R. Roberts. Appoint Kay Gregory Tucker, replacing Melinda Haynes. Appoint Martha Smith, replacing Donald Knight. And appoint Sharon Santamore to fill a vacancy. On our gas board, I would like to appoint Steve Morris, replacing Brenda Sharp. On a disciplinary review board, I'd like to reappoint David Gray. And to the planning commission, I appoint Kurt Wade, replacing Mr. Howard Wilson. And while I do that, I want to thank those members of the public who have served on these boards and commissions, very able, and will appreciate their time and appreciate their, maintaining their interest in these boards and commissions during their service, and to make these recommended appointments to you.
I move to approve the recommendations of the mayor.
Second.
All right. You have a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Other business from staff to come before the council? One thing I might mention while Mr. A-lite is coming up is that this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., the Martin Luther King Day Annual Brunch is at the James Union Building on the campus of the Middle Tennessee State University. And certainly hope that anyone who is interested will attend that, certainly pay their respects. We have the holiday coming up on Monday, but the brunch will be at the James Union Building at MTSU, 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, this Saturday coming up, the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. During its regular meeting on January 12th, the Murfreesboro Plan Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matters that need to be scheduled for public hearings. I bring them to you tonight because our Plan Commission deferred its meeting one week, and then we're not going to meet next week. And some of these are a little bit time-sensitive, and we need to just go ahead and schedule public hearings so we can catch up on our time. The first is a zoning change request to amend the Reserve at Deal Lane PRD and to rename the development to Richland Falls. And this is located along Deal Lane. The second is a zoning change request to rezone the Manson Pike Center, approximately 1.3 acres from PCD to CF, and approximately 2.5 acres from RS-15 to CF, located on the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. The third is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 18.4 acres from PUD to RM-16 and 43.1 acres from PUD to CH, located west of Rogers Boulevard and south of Manson Pike. The fourth item is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 18.44 acres from RS-15 to CH and 10.8 acres from CF to CH. And this is located along Gresham Lane and Fortress Boulevard. And both of these last two items are in the area where the new road realignment is currently under construction.
All right. Ms. McGinnan?
February 10.
All right. Council members, you've had February 10th suggested to you.
So moved. Are we going to meet that day?
I guess we will.
Yes.
Exactly right.
February 10, it is. I move that, you approve.
All right. You have a motion in second to set public hearings for February the 10th. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Additionally, the Plan Commission considered a request by MTSU for the closure and abandonment of a portion of Wildes Court. After a public hearing, the Plan Commission approved the request for the closure of the street and recommended approval to, by the city council, subject to the applicant, having a surveyor field locate any existing utility lines that will remain, having a surveyor prepare a re-subdivision plan of the area that should include the easements that will remain for the existing utility lines, and provide a legal description for the area to be abandoned by the city. The matter does not require a public hearing by the council. The council is requested to join in approving the request and to authorize the mayor to sign necessary quitclaim deeds to be prepared by the city's legal department to accomplish the abandonment. And you'll notice that there's a map in your agenda materials that shows where this is. What this map does not show is that basically, MTSU will be constructing a new entrance into the campus that will align with the street. And this street will be basically turned over to them as their private street to, so they can enforce their, their laws, I guess, and be law enforcement in that area.
There's six lots on that, that you're saying there's four homes they already own, and a fifth lot is vacant. Is there six, are there six there? One?
Mayor, there are four lots in this portion of the cul-de-sac. There are two more, one on each side, that front on Greenland Drive. Those two that front on Greenland Drive are not part of this tonight, although in the future, they may come back. MTSU owns the one on the west side, but does not own the one on the east side.
Okay.
That lot does not have a address on Wildes Court. It has an address on Greenland Drive.
And the vacant lot is?
It's owned by MTSU.
And where is it?
That would be on the west side of Wildes Court, fronting on Greenland Drive.
And front, so it's vacant on the front?
Yes.
All right.
And all those houses that are, on those four lots will be removed as part of MTSU's construction project.
All right. Any questions regarding this abandonment request?
Mayor, I move to approve the recommendation.
All right. That's the first part, which is to abandon street closure and the right-of-way abandonment request for a portion of Wildes Court at Greenland Drive. Is that correct? So, we have to have two motions? Just one?
Do it all in one?
One. All right. So, that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. A-lite. Anything else from staff or the council to come before the council?
One question.
Mr. McFarland?
Mayor, we have the report from the community development on the NSP program. And I was just going to ask, unless the other council members object, that I'd like, if we can ask Mr. Calo to give us pictures to go with this report, so we can see pictures of the homes, to make sure that we, we had so much debate on that, I think that it'd be good for us to actually see the homes, that we can justify that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor?
I think top is-
Oh, Mr. Gilli?
I had one other thing I wanted to ask Ms. McGinnan, she wasn't in mind, doing a little research for us. I had a couple of, with the robberies that we've had over the last several weeks, I've had a couple of different convenience store owners ask me if we would look into doing, I think, they told me that Metro of Davidson has done this, and has to have a city ordinance that you cannot enter into a business with your face covered or with a hoodie pulled